...Fitchburg City Council to order. Counsel Tran, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag? Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschmarik, Counselor Bean, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Beazall, Counselor Clark, Counselor Dina Tally, Counselor Donnelly, Counselor Green, Counselor Joseph, Counselor Caddy, Counselor Tran.
Before we move to the public forum, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for two great individuals from Fitchburg. The first, John Farmer, Sr., a veteran of the United States Army and longtime advocate for fellow veterans, and Bob Whitney, a husband for former Mayor Whitney and a veteran of the United States Air Force himself. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? If you're addressing the Flickner Drive petition, that'll be at a later time. Hearing none. We'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which convened earlier this evening. We had two new appointments. Interim Executive Director of Community Development to fill a vacancy left by Mr. Larry Cassassa until a qualified permanent appointment is confirmed for Ms. Elizabeth Murphy. That vote was unanimous. Building Commissioner for term to expire June 7, 2020, Mr. Mark A. Barbodaro. That was also approved unanimously. And reappointment, a member of Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire June 1, 2018, Ms. Sharon Tardif, also approved unanimously.
Motion to accept the Appointments Committee report and approve the appointments to be confirmed.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report and to confirm the appointments. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. I'd like to congratulate Liz Murphy for her position as interim Executive Director of Community Development and our new to the city of Fitchburg, Mr. Mark A. Barbodaro as Building Commissioner to the city of Fitchburg. I'd also like to thank the two individuals whose seats they will be filling, Mr. Larry Cassassa and Mr. Duffy Lanciahny. I'd like to thank them for their distinguished service to this city. We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records.
We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept the Committee on Records report.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from his honor, the mayor. Several letters of appointments this evening. The first appointment of permanent reserve police officers, Brian M. Withington, Sarah N. Wing, Mark R. Caddy, Kelton R. Stacy. Communication two, appointment of Mr. Georgie Rodriguez as a member of the Fitchburg Council on Aging for a three-year term scheduled to expire on June 1, 2020. Third letter of appointment, Mr. Peter Capadegli as a member of the Planning Board for a five-year term scheduled to expire June 1, 2022. Fourth letter of appointment of Ms. Jeanne Servell as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a two-year term scheduled to expire on June 1, 2019. Appointment of Ms. Susan Davis as Director of Human Resources for a term to expire June 1, 2019. And the sixth letter, temporary appointment of Mr. John Morielly as interim Building Commissioner effective June 3, 2017, until his successor has been appointed and qualified, which is scheduled before the Appointments Committee on June 6, 2017. Moving to the agenda, a report from the Finance Committee meeting of May 23, 2017. Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on May 23 and took up several items that I will not read. All were adopted. I would like to ask that the council please hold out of the report 11317 at the direction of the city clerk, considering this is an ordinance change that requires a third and final reading.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 11317. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move 11317 be sent to its third and final reading and rolled or daimed and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 11317. An ordinance, the city of Fitchburg hereby amends the city's general ordinances by adding a new section to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by certain city departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers under mass general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as follows. Departmental revolving funds as outlined in the enclosed ordinance be adopted. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Planning Board, meeting of May 9, 2017, took up one item, 0817, Vincent Poussetteri II, City Solicitor, to establish an ordinance controlling telecommunications development and operations in the city of Fitchburg to replace Section 18162 and insert in its place a new bylaw as outlined in the enclosed petition. With the suggestions and additions listed in the report. Okay.
We can, this is still going to go through our committee, right? I mean, it's not...
Correct. It does.
So that's just going to be considered when we put it into our...
Correct. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
A motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Works Committee meeting of May 30, 2017. Counselor Caddy.
President, the Public Works Committee met on May 30 at 5:00 p.m. The first petition, 15917, Counselors Jody Joseph and Marcus Dina Tally to inspect and if warranted, remove a tree on the right side of the road coming from electric ab just after 407 Monley Road was held in committee. 16017, Marcus Dina Tally and Amy Green to repair a sinkhole on the sidewalk created by recent construction next to the driveway at 236 Walton Street that was granted. 11417, City of Fitchburg Planning Board to discontinue as a public way the section of Westminster Road within the game on property boundary as outfitted in the enclosed petition that was granted. 12117, Counselor Paul Boishman to install a berm from the corner of Plymouth Street to the beginning of Rango Ave heading west, house number 388 and up. Be amended to show that the berm will be constructed on Fairmont Street and be granted as amended. 12217, Counselor Paul Boishman to repair replaced sidewalk located at 11 Home Street. A pedestrian was injured in a fall on the sidewalk that was granted. And last was 12317, Counselor Paul Boishman to install an apron at the driveway located at 14/16 Clearview Ave to prevent further water damage. Also install a berm in front of 14/16 Clearview Ave to Foch Ave because the water is eroding the property. Be amended, clarify the addresses, 14/16 Clearview Ave, be granted as amended.
Make a motion to accept the Public Works Committee report.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Hearings, 20715, to accept Kenneth J. Mattson, President, to accept Downey Circle located within Parker Hill subdivision as a public way. Now declare the hearing open. Ask any person or persons representing the petition to be seated at the center table and identify self by name for the record. Is there anyone here this evening? Are there any questions by counselors? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All have been heard. I declare the hearing closed. Matters before you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 20715. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Item 1217, Mattson Homes Inc., New Hampshire Corporation, to accept Flickner Drive as a public way in the city of Fitchburg. Now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to, who represents the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition?
Raymond Sawtell. I live in 16 Flicker Drive. A few things. At the mouth of Flicker Drive in Briarwood, there's a huge sign that lays out Parker Hill Estates. No reason to have that sign now. I talked to Ken twice about removing it. He said he would. There's a smaller sign from a mortgage company that's there. That should be removed. Those about my property. There's a sign on my property on a tree that has an EPA signature and some other numbers there. I'm not sure what it means. So that's a question. Can I remove that sign? At the end of the street near the cul-de-sac, there's a light that's not functional. There's eight small children in that neighborhood. It's a safety issue. Whoever's responsible for making sure that light is working should make sure it's working before you sign off that road. Again, little kids play around that cul-de-sac, especially the winter months. Little kids, dark, early, safety issue. Here's a question, the fire hydrant. Has that fire hydrant been tested and signed off by the fire department? So that's a question. At the other end of the entrance to development, where there was a sign before, it fell down. Ken removed it and got rid of it, but there's a big frame down there that should be removed.
Where's the location of that, sir?
That would be... Help me out, guys. Parker Hill. At the mouth of that, there's a big frame where the same type sign was there showing, you know, the different phases and everything else. Now, someone came in today and hydroceded the town property, you know, the 10-foot line, which was great. It needed it. But unfortunately, with all this rain today, it's all puddled up. So a request to have, Ken have someone come out and do that again, because it's just a waste. It's all puddled up and it's, at best, it's capturing 50% of what needs to be done there. That's all I have. You guys have anything else?
Sir, are you speaking, I just want to clarify. Are you speaking in favor of the petition?
Well, I want these things taken care of.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, they should be taken care of. The safety thing in particular.
Good evening, sir.
Brian Lawrence, 19 Briarwood Drive. I also have property now with the new development that abuts Flicker Drive, and I have a berm that's already been scouted by the city plow. So I guess my question is to all you folks is who repairs these berms? Because it's only going to get worse. I have a whole berm that abuts my property on Briarwood Drive that's already been scouted up a few times, so...
Sir, if it's a public, if that's on the public way and abuts public rights of way, that'd be the city that would repair the berms, and certainly your ward counselor would be happy to work with you, I'm sure. Is the counselor voting?
No.
Counselor Caddy. Counselor Caddy, right, to my right is the ward counselor. I'm sure he'd be happy to work with you to submit something to the DPW.
Well, just a thought, this might be a little off topic, but if you're going to continue to make properties like this where you're going to have a tar berm abutting sidewalk, we should probably make some kind of insert so we could put sticks there in the wintertime, because the plows are just gouging these things all up, and it's going to continually be a problem. And I guess if we're taxpayers, we're paying for those repairs, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Counselor Caddy.
So if there's damage to the berms, it's not technically city property yet, so the contractor, Ken Mattson, would be responsible for that before we accept it. It's unusual for Ken Mattson not to be here at these meetings. He's always come. Sure, I was there today, and I saw the sign you were talking about. So I'm pretty sure if Ken had known about this meeting, he'd be here tonight, and if there were concerns, he would have addressed them. The project, it's actually beautiful. I went there today, and the sidewalks are nice, the road's nice. So I'd be asking the council to step this back. I'm sure Ken will come here. In the meantime, if you could give me your concerns, I'll get to Ken Mattson, make sure everything's addressed. Once the city accepts this as a public way, we own it. If there's problems there, I don't want to accept it as a public way until he corrects the problems. Then we'll accept it, and then after that, we own the problem. So again, I'm surprised Ken Mattson's not here. He's usually good about this. There must have been, something must have been messed up with him not being here, but so as the ward counselor, I'd like to step it back to our next meeting. You can get ahold of me. Anything that you have a problem with, I'll call Ken, make sure he takes care of it, and then we'll, once you're satisfied, we'll accept it as a public way.
What's the process for the light? I can't believe the light...
I don't know. Because I was there during the day today. I didn't see the light on because it was during the daytime.
There are little kids in two houses.
Sure. But he, in order, so for us to accept it as a public way, it takes the onus off him. The responsibility comes off him and onto the city, the city to correct everything? I don't want to accept it as a public way if there's a problem. So whatever is there as a problem, he has to correct it, and then we'll accept it as a public way. And now, if there's a problem in the future with berms, with the plows hitting them, because this winter, he privately pawed that road. His private contractor hit that berm, not the city. So he needs to correct all these issues. We accept it, and then the city will be responsible. So maybe he doesn't know about the light, you know, I don't know.
I've seen the city gouge my berm since it abut Briarwood Drive several times.
Yep. Well, if, then it's, if it's city property, we own it. You would call me, I'd petition the city to fix it. They should fix it. But if it's anything that's privately owned at this point, he owns it until we accept it, then we own it. So I'll, if the council's willing, we'll set it back for a couple of weeks. You tell me what the issues are, I'll get to our director of the Commission of Public Works.
You have the issues.
Yep.
Right?
I have them. If that's it, but...
The light, the hydrant, the signs, the berms.
Sir, the list has been compiled. It's on record with the city clerk.
Yep.
Because it was a waste, so it's too bad.
But it's been raining, so...
I know. I talked to the guy.
Sorry, I'd like to avoid a dialogue unless you'd like to come back up and be seated at the center table. We certainly have a list of all of the issues that you've brought to light. Counselor Caddy is the shortest. He'll be, he'll be working with them. The city solicitor, Poussetteri, has confirmed he'll be in touch with Ken Mattson to arrange for a discussion. That said, I have Counselor, Counselor Caddy, or you all?
I was at, thanks.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yeah, I was going to say that I'm not going to vote to accept this until Mr. Mattson fixes all of these issues. And that is the purpose of this hearing, is to collect this information from the residents, give it to the attorney and the ward counselor who's on top of it, get Mr. Mattson to fix all of these issues so the taxpayers don't have to fix it for him, and then we accept it as a public way. And then anything after that point becomes our responsibility. So anytime we have new developments like this and we accept them, we make sure that there is a pick list that's been adequately addressed, and clearly it hasn't been in this area, so the onus is on him to fix it, and I won't support accepting this as long as it takes for Mr. Mattson to correct these issues on his dime. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. The fire department uses the hydrants, they don't inspect them. The water department owns them and inspects them. So just for clarification, the water department does anything to do with it. The fire department doesn't sign off. And I believe that Planning Board has already signed off on all of this.
So I agree, this is exactly how the process should work, and commend you residents for coming out and notifying us of these issues. And this particular developer has shown in the past that he always does his due diligence to repair those identified issues, so I have no doubt that once these concerns have been brought to him, that this will be repaired. We'll have him back here for the next meeting, and we'll make sure that everything's repaired in a good order before we, before we move this forward and accept this as a public way. Counselor Joseph.
Just for clarification, did you say the berm that was broken was on Flicker or was it on Briarwood?
It's on Flicker. But there's also broken ones on Briarwood. That's why I suggested if you build projects like this in the future, put some inserts in there so we can put sticks in there in the wintertime, because if I put them on my property, the plow is going to come right up, and when it snows out, it's a real bad storm. I take a vacation, a woo-hoo, big fun time doing sidewalk three times.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to hold 11217 and send it to the next public hearing, which is June 20, I believe.
Do you want to recess the hearing? Because it's still open. Counselor, would it be to recess until June 20?
20.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second to recess, 1217 until June 20. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. 817, Vincent Poussetteri II, City Solicitor, to establish an ordinance controlling telecommunications development and operations in the city of Fitchburg to replace Section 18162 and insert in its place a new bylaw as outlined in the enclosed petition. Now declare the hearing open. Going to give our city solicitor a chance to get back to his seat, and then you'll be discussing your telecommunications ordinance.
Turney Tree.
Turney Tree. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here this, for this meeting.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm just going to give a brief outline of the reason for this replacement of the ordinances regarding the wireless communication structures. The reason for the ordinance is to expand the authority of the Planning Board when it deems appropriate to further regulate any wireless communications facilities that are being installed within the city. The council may remember that we have recently had an applicant for lease of city property which alleged that our ordinances did not apply to it anymore, so that it did not have to comply with them. So with this ordinance, what we're doing is expanding the definition, hopefully to keep up with current technology of what a wireless communications facility is. We are requiring site plan approval for anything which is not a building-mounted antenna. The Planning Board retains the right to waive any provisions that are newly implemented so long as it finds that public health and safety are not affected by the waiver. But we do have an emphasis on, is this a necessary facility? So could we co-locate on another existing facility? Is there going to be a company or party continually responsible for this facility? They're not just going to install and leave. What is, what is the plan going to be for this facility if it is abandoned in the future due to changes in technology making it unnecessary? And there is an emphasis on the visual impact of the facility on the neighborhood. Additional considerations are bulk height, glare, and noise generated by any facility. The Planning Board would have the ability to impose conditions on a special permit granted, but the threshold for what would require a special permit has not changed. So we have not increased the bar for those facilities which would require the special permit process. So that is, in general, a summary of these provisions. I'm happy to take any specific questions that you might have.
Counselor Boishman.
When you're talking about this, we're talking about that company came in front of us a few months ago, Mobile Light.
Yes.
And then it'd be Comcast next, and then AT&amp;T.
Yes, and let me say we're not trying in any way to exclude any specific company, just to make sure that anyone who wants to install a wireless communications facility is subject to our ordinances. So, yes.
So, before I accept this, what the city solicitor's recommending here, on that 181.62, now, that 181.62, when I read it, I was under the impression that, that the towers, that we didn't have anything on the books for wireless, like Mobile, I use Mobile Light because they came in front of this council. We don't have anything on the books whatsoever, so we can't really dictate, the way I understand it, the way I understand it, we said they can go and use unitarized poles. They're all unitarized poles. And according to where I understand it, from the Department of Public Utilities, they can't refuse, I'll use Mobile Light again, to use their poles. They have to let them use their pole. And my question is, how high can, are we going to allow them to put an antenna up on that pole?
So anything which is greater than 15 feet protruding from a structure will require a special permit. And so the Planning Board would have the ability to prohibit, in that case, anything that's going to protrude up or horizontally greater than 15 feet.
Is the Planning Board going to try, underneath your rules that you're making here, going to try to say, because they want to use the university, because that's their focus for G5? Like hide it so the residents of the community don't see it? Like what I read when I was doing my research and I was arguing, whenever all the paperwork, and I should, I still got it right here, as a matter of fact, a lot of communities want it hid. They don't want to see it. They're putting them in different places where you don't even know they're there. You can't see it, but it does its purpose. And that's what I would like to see. I don't want to come down the road if I'm not a counselor, because I like to look at the beauty of Fitchburg and see this antenna sticking up in the air, or I like to call it the Christmas tree, adding more decorations to the tree. I just don't want to see that. And that's why I've been fighting this. It's not, don't get me wrong, counselors, it's not that I'm against G5 and progress. I love progress. But I think we have to work hand in hand together with nature to save the beauty of a community. As I drive down the road, I see these tin towers, and I say to myself, how do we ever allow this to happen? But progress and money talks, and people like me walk, you know what I mean? But I don't know about this.
So I just want to understand the question.
Well, my question is, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're putting a lot of restrictions here so we can keep the beauty of the neighborhoods. We don't lose the beauty of neighborhoods.
So let me say that there's a lot of considerations in here, and a lot of grounds for the Planning Board in its discretion to deny a request. And a number of them are aesthetic in nature. In addition to that, in the proposed Section 181.6241, it states that concealed facilities are allowed as of right. So that, within the ordinance, there is this standing preference for those kinds of concealed facilities that you're looking for, because it's an easier process. So I think that if I understood your question correctly, your concerns are addressed within there. I certainly can't answer how the Planning Board is going to exercise its discretion. But that's, they do have the ability to do so.
All right. Okay. Counselor Caddy.
So, so thank you. Every once in a while, something like this comes up. This is a very important piece of legislation. I'm glad that the solicitor or whoever started this jumped on it, because we don't have anything in place, and I can feel that someone could come in and take advantage of our city very quickly, because we have nothing in place. So just want to make a comment. This is a very, very big piece of legislation for our city to move. I hope the Planning Board moves on it very quickly, so that we don't end up with issues that we wish we never got involved with. And thank you.
Thanks. The, one comment to make on this is that the provisions of the ordinance, if passed, will go back to the date of its original filing, so that we do have some protective measure in place, I would think, for anything that is on the horizon.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Green.
Yeah, I would just like to commend both of you for the work putting into this. I'm sure that if we dug a little deeper in all of our outdated ordinances, that there would be lots of work for you for years coming with these type of things. And again, what I heard from this is that there will be the ability to compose conditions up for side plan review and approval. Is it actually necessary? And that you're taking into effect the visual impact that it has on neighborhoods and residents? So I can't be more pleased with this. Again, I'm sure that there are lots of ordinances that could use a refresh, because it is 2017, and we know that technology and progress is on us. So I commend the work that you're doing and the forward thinking that you're putting into this to protect us as a community.
Thank you, Counselor. And Attorney Poussetteri and I both worked substantially on this, as well as our intern And Attorney Pusiteri and I both worked substantially on this, as well as our intern at the time, Devin Moran, who did research into other communities' adoption of ordinances regarding wireless communications. So I'd certainly like to thank both of them and recognize their hard work.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I guess my only concern, I, we had somebody in front of us that wanted to do a project in Pittsburgh, and we were caught behind the eight ball not having this at that point, because it was new. Did we, has that person still trying to approach the city of Pittsburgh? Or did we, or is that something that was, he wouldn't have, they wouldn't have probably bought into this? Or...
That person was seeking a lease of city property.
Right.
And they would have, after that, if the lease had been granted, which is a decision that the city council was making completely in disregard of this ordinance or the possibility of this ordinance, because it's really just a question of, does the city want to lease its property? And that was it. The city decided in the negative, and the city solicitor can correct me, but I don't believe we'd have further communication from this individual seeking to reestablish...
Not that I'm aware of. He may have been down at City Hall. But, again, I think just to echo what you had already said, what happened not with him was not that we wanted him or didn't want him, is that during a public meeting, he informed us and the council that our ordinance was inadequate. And councilors were alerted to that, and councilors had requested that the law department address the matter, and this is what we were able to put together for you.
But if he came in today and we had this ordinance on, it would probably make our decision of whether or not we wanted to lease property more, I mean, better, better chance of passing something like that, knowing that we have protected ourselves with a special permitting process for whatever they might have wanted to do. So I appreciate that we are doing this, because obviously he wasn't the first one that's going to come down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
I'll just add, this was, this wasn't too long ago that this was before us, and it was, it was very obvious that there was a glaring hole in our city code. And, you know, when there was a request from council for there to be something drafted, I certainly didn't expect it in this timeframe. So I appreciate you prioritizing this and helping us to get something on the books to provide us some method of evaluating future decisions moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would say that the planning board commentary was also very helpful, so I appreciate the amendments that they suggested.
All right, that said, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All have been heard. I declare the hearing closed.
Motion to approve 8017.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 8017. And councilors, this, with the, are these the suggested changes?
Yeah.
With the suggested changes from the planning board?
Yes.
Agreed. Okay. So I have a motion and second to accept, approve 8017 with the suggested changes from the planning board. Counselors, this vote, because it's on a zoning matter, will require eight votes to pass this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Next, public hearing petition, item 15717, Comcast of Massachusetts, 3, Inc., to install a new conduit on Boulder Drive for the purpose of providing Comcast service to 454 to 280 Main Street. And now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak or representing the petition? Gentlemen, good evening.
David.
Could kindly identify yourself by name and address for the record.
Dave Hawley, Lubin, Massachusetts.
Gil Quintero, Hudson, New Hampshire.
If you'd like to, the floor is yours, if you'd like to speak to the merits of the matter before us.
So Boulder Drive, starting at the existing Comcast vault at the corner of Boulder Drive and Putnam Street, would be excavated to install two 3-inch PVC conduits for a distance of 998 plus or minus feet, and three 24-by-36-inch flush mount vaults in the sidewalk for the purpose of providing service to 454 to 280 Main Street.
Questions from councilors. Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you. Are these, do these come for us or come to your company upon request of the private property owner?
Typically, private property owner.
Okay, so this isn't, so I know that the city's had some, the city's been trying to get more conduits down on downtown as an airport, as well as Airport Road. I just wasn't sure if this was spearheaded by the business or by the city, the businesses.
We've had, I've had several, several business requests there, so I've done several surveys.
I guess where I get confused is, I'm going to support this, obviously, it's necessary. It's rather embarrassing that we don't even have it down there right now. But my question in general is, we've identified this as an issue of critical need for years. Yet if businesses can spearhead this change, why wouldn't they have done it on day one then? I used to think that this was a city matter, but if a business owner can pick up the phone, call Comcast, and say, I want an installation done, I guess they can do it if they'll pay the price. But I just was always confused. I always used to think that the city was a barrier to these kinds of installations. But if the private property owners can do this, I guess I don't know why it's an issue, quite frankly.
Counselor, I believe the mayor has worked extensively on this, can provide some context.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Trevor Banier, my IT manager, as well as A.J. Terigney, I think has been working with you folks for quite some time, along with, is it Verizon at Airport Road? Is that Verizon, is that you guys? You Comcast, but you're going overhead on Airport Road. Right. Yeah, this really was an initiative of the city. I mean, we're the ones who brought you to the table, correct?
Well, the last time we were here, that was the whole...
Right.
We pretty much...
Yeah, thank you. We just wanted to clarify.
All right, but if there are, if there are five or six businesses that need it, why would they need to go through the city? Can't they just go to you guys directly?
Answer that.
That's what I'm confused about. Why do we need, why do we need your office to help out?
Very simply, and this is the corporation's position, return on investment.
Okay.
All right.
I guess I, if it's a return on investment, what do they care if you're getting involved? I mean, if they're not going to let six business owners get what they want, if they're going to pay for it, why does the city have to push you guys to do it as well? It doesn't make any sense, and there's no added incentive. The return's the return. I'm, maybe I'm quibbling, I just, I used to think that it was the cities...
Yes, you're quibbling. No, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I used to think that it was the cities serving as the barrier to these kinds of installations.
It's not.
If, I am a business owner, and I call you guys and I say, I need connection to my business, it sounds to me, therefore, then that the company is saying, well, it's not cost feasible for us to just install it for this one location. We'd have to do it across locations in order to get a return. Is that a fair assessment?
Depends on if the infrastructure is already built up to that point, to be able to get you the install within the next couple of days, or if we're not that far along.
So how many, how many businesses does this serve between 454 and 280? Do we know?
I don't have an exact number.
Okay. All right, so these businesses have a need, they contact you guys, for whatever reason, it wasn't really approved until the city got involved and helped out with that process. Is that what I'm understanding? So, back to my original point, with Comcast is, well, if it didn't get them a return on their investment prior to the mayor's involvement, where is it getting a return on their investment after the mayor's involvement? I'm going to support it, I just don't understand the process from the company's point of view in terms, and you guys, I know, are not the ones who make the final decisions on these. It just doesn't make sense to me that, the return doesn't change whether we get involved or not. So, if Comcast isn't going to do it based on an analysis of their return on investment from the businesses' requests, what do they care if the city gets involved? They're still not getting the return they want. So, I don't, I don't understand. Thank you.
Counselor, well, I think you're, you're right. I'm sure Comcast is still not getting the return they want. I think at the end of the day, it was, they ultimately typically make a profit on these, it's just not necessarily the profit margin they want to be making on these. And I think this was a case of this mayor, this city, as well as some extra leverage, I believe, at the state level from Attorney General Healy's office and other state offices applying perhaps some pressure or incentive to help bring Comcast, find a way to make their profit margins workable enough to invest in infrastructure downtown. At the end of the day...
I'm not necessarily criticizing Comcast, I just, it doesn't make sense to me when I hear the whole story. That's all. I, for whatever reasons...
I'll just add, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, this has been sorely needed on Main Street for a long time.
Yes.
And I'm happy to see us be able to provide with Comcast a service to the businesses that have been crying for it for a long time. So thank you, gentlemen, for moving forward. Thank you to the administration. Counselor Donnelly, I have you. I have several councilors on the list. So, thank you to those involved to help move it forward to this point. Counselor Caddy.
So, if I had a business in that location, I'd be very happy at this decision. And this may be a little off the wall, but it's something that's been bothering me in the city for a long time. You're going to be building these boxes, right, to house the equipment? Is that what I understood?
No, they'll be vaults.
Vaults?
Yeah.
So it'll be in-ground?
Yes, correct.
All right. Well, so, but you have others in the city that are above-ground?
That's correct, yes.
So, I've been to other cities across the country, and a lot of the cities use those for marketing purposes. Would your company be amenable? Like, so for instance, the Long Joe Bike Race that has been in Pittsburgh for 52 years, I've been to other cities where they've actually used those above-ground vaulted vaults to market the city. Would that be something that your, your company would be amenable to, where we could, you know, advertise the Long Joe, the Civic Days, a lot of things that we do in the city that you could use a printed overlay that could go on those vaults, and then taken off and replaced with other events that are coming? I mean, so, you go to some of the areas in the city, and you have these, you know, three-foot by three-foot, you know, high, and they're green, and they look okay, but they're not really that attractive in inner-city urban areas.
Right.
So, Denver, Colorado, some of the big places I've been, they, they use them for all different functions. And it's, it's too bad that we couldn't really use that in the city, because we could use that in the city. You know, you have a structure that really doesn't look that nice, but we really could help it with the city's image.
You may be referring to the biggest structures, which is the...
Yeah, they're three-by-three.
...transformers that the power company has, the ones that we have, the biggest ones that we have are the dog houses.
Yeah. So yours are all sub-level?
The 20, 12 inches by 12 inches.
Yeah.
The uprights. And then we have the extra-large, which is probably what, 36?
Two foot by three foot, roughly.
Yeah. Yeah. Those are the largest ones we have.
Just a question, I mean, you must have something that...
Me personally, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but that would be a question that, you know, our government relations would probably...
Sure.
Would have the answer to.
If you could just put that question forward...
Absolutely.
And see if they would consider it where applicable.
Well, do you have any examples that we could take back and...
So, I don't know the difference between Comcast telephone, so I wouldn't know who owns what at this point, but I know I...
Well, I mean, examples of the advertising you were referring to that we can bring back.
All right, so, Anna, you're going to have to help with this. We were in...
Counselor Caddy, the city solicitor just informed me, the city's been in contact with the governmental relations person, perhaps, if you could send the examples or photos to the city solicitor, it'd be amenable to sharing that with you, gentlemen, being able to take that back to your team.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Caddy.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we still have a few other questions from councilors. The city code provides for, in Chapter 89, Section 12, for a dual duct, an additional one duct, not less than three inches in diameter for city purposes. I brought this up at the last, last time you were in front of us, I just want to make sure you'd be amenable to providing that for this and your next, the next petition. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Counselor Green.
My question further on with Counselor Caddy is that, you know, we have a very strong arts community in this, in the city, who are always looking to paint or spruce up the boxes, not only yours, which look like headstones, you know, they're the size of a raised headstone, and with the Unitil boxes as well. So, again, if the sleeve wouldn't work, which is technology and state-of-the-art, they are quite cool, we would always be open to having our local professional artists, artisans, not crafters, paint on those boxes if permitted by you as well. My other question specifically for this petition is, if you're running conduit right now from 280 up to 454, why wouldn't you just connect it to the conduit that you have at our federal building?
That's, that's way further up on Main Street. We would have to go to the closest location, which would be the corner of Boulder and Putnam.
Okay, but again, for years, we've asked for this to be done. And, I mean, are you, I guess my question is, are you going to come before us every time there's three or four businesses along the way who say, oh, well, the business right next to me got it, and all they had to do was request it? I mean, why wouldn't you just be proactive and say, hey, Pittsburgh, we finally got the message, we're going to provide it all the way up Main Street? And then guess what? Then you never have to come before us again and ask our permission to keep digging up our streets, replacing our sidewalks. And again, if it's money, just say that it's money, that it's cost prohibitive to do this. But if you're doing businesses up to 454, why wouldn't you just continue to the building that you already have, that's our federal building?
We do have, from 454 up, we have service. We don't have service from 454 down to, towards the Santander Bank.
Okay, so then, okay, so then my question would be, from 1 Main Street or 10 Main Street up to 280, why wouldn't you just do it?
I wish I would have the answer for you, but I don't have that answer for you. That would be something that, you know, again, our government relations folks might be able to, you know, answer that question.
Well, if I could just add in, we don't, I don't know what was approved to as this scope of this project, what, if there are any limits to this project as to what was agreed to as part of this project? This is, this just may be one phase of this project. I don't know what was agreed to between the city and Comcast about how big of a scope of area was agreed to, to build out as part of this, this project this time.
And I'm trying to just visualize where 280 on Main Street...
Give me one second.
Beamers has to be further than 280, I mean...
It's the building right next door, Santander Bank.
Yeah, on the bank.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking from the bank down to 10 Main Street? That's a couple hundred feet?
Going up, right.
Not, okay.
And you've got bridge crossings.
Isn't technology wonderful? Thank you.
That's a motion again.
Counselor Dina Tally, I'm not going to fight this, it's about time, I agree. But I thought, Mayor...
Counselors, mayor, quorum.
Mayor, I got, I got a question. I thought I read in the paper a while ago on your first term, way back when, when we talked about Main Street, when you guys were in front of us, and we were all saying, and you gave us a cost that was going to cost $100,000, and that you were trying to work with. Then I thought, where I read in the paper, we got some kind of, like, almost like a grant or something from the state, so we could put the internet service on Main Street, you were tickled pink, and on the Airport Road. And I was just wondering, is that part of this? Because I have to agree with Counselor Dina Tally over here. I mean, if you only get 10 customers, and it costs $100,000, and you're only, I'm not renting a TV, I'm just doing the internet at $30, why wouldn't you just put a wireless thing up on it, someplace on a building where everybody in that vicinity can tap into it, because the new thing is wireless, instead of running wires? No, it's not. Well, I just thought I asked. But, didn't we get a grant, Mayor? I thought, I thought we got something from the state.
Mayor, counsel, he's asking me a question. Can I respond?
Mayor, if you could respond and answer the question.
Thank you. Counselor, that was, that was... Counselor, that was, that was in discussion, all right, and these gentlemen are the, I guess you're a level above the boots on the ground, are you not? You guys are the guys in there doing the work, the actual work. Well, the questions they're asking, you're asking these folks, it's happening above them, well above them, at a corporate level. I'm not going to bore everyone going into how it is to deal with corporations like Comcast and Verizon. It's very complicated, but in this particular case, it's not the, it's not the AG's office that we're working with, it's Lieutenant Governor. And we're working with Lieutenant Governor Jay Ash, Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, so we're working with securing the necessary funding to make this happen. So we're, we're just about there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think the age-old question in development is, what came first, the chicken or the egg? So when someone in business is going to, if, if government says we want it in, if the mayor or even higher up, the governor says, "We want it in the street," business is going to say, "Well, how are we going to make any money? Why should we put it in?" If somebody owns a building and they say, "I think I can rent this building if I have this internet, we can bring a business in," no guarantees, but I understand this, even in the 80s residential, when, when Comcast came in and started to do the whole city, I had it in one location, I moved, I was kind of in the boondocks, I couldn't get it. I said, "I'll take every service that you provide." I still couldn't get it. About a year later, my neighbor had it, and I just happened to see it, but then I called up, it was already in front of the house, but it's, one, one business isn't going to do it. And as, as so many people have addressed, you're not going to do it for free, they're not doing it for nothing, and there's nobody that owns a building that wants to pay how many thousand dollars just to get it to a building that's empty. They're already having enough individual problems trying to get the building up, let alone providing infrastructure for no customers. So, I mean, I support it, and I understand you have to do it in phases. I understand, you understand it, most of us understand that, you're going to go with the businesses, so, are the most pressured, but they're not going to do all of Main Street because it's not going to develop like that.
That said, thank you, gentlemen. Is anyone here wishing, wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters noted for the council.
Take a motion exit.
I have a, a motion and second to approve, councilors, just a reminder, this will require two, two-thirds?
No.
No, sorry, it's a simple majority.
You don't do it, that's.
Um, that's with city code, so. I have a motion and second, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, you're up once again. You had so much fun the first time, you decided to come back, didn't you? 15817, Comcast of Massachusetts 3, Inc., to install a new conduit on Crescent Street and Blossom Street for the purpose of providing Comcast service to 305 Main Street. We have folks representing the petition.
Dave Haweling, Comcast, Woben, Massachusetts. Crescent Street and Blossom Street, starting at Utility Pool 423/1 on Crescent Street, excavating to install two three-inch PVC conduits, 269 feet plus or minus, and one 24 by 36-inch flush mount vault in the sidewalk on Blossom Street for the purpose of providing Comcast service to 305 Main Street.
Gentlemen, can you just clarify, is it above-ground or?
The flush mount vault in the sidewalk.
Great. And same question as last time, the, the, the additional city ducts for access will not be an issue. Excellent. Are there any councilors with questions or comments? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
817.
I have a motion and second to approve 15817, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Orders, finance, 16117, ordered that the city.
Move 16117 through 17317 be sent to finance.
I have a motion, send 16117 up to and including 17317 to finance committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Orders, other, 17417, order laying out Downey Circle as a public way or street.
17417 to 17517.
Counselor, 17417 was passed, earlier was 17517.
Motion to approve 17417.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 17417, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous.
Second.
I have a motion and second to hold 17517, order laying out Flickner Drive as a public way or street, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Ordinances, 15117, an ordinance, the building, department fee schedule will be updated by the following amendments, the city code is outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition 7917, final reading.
Motion to send 15117 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 15117 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 15217, an ordinance amending Section 16976 of the city code entitled Stop Intersections at the Line, which references the first column, Billings Road, as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference Arnhow Farm Road, reference petition 26516, final reading.
Motion to send 15217 to its final reading, enrolled, and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 15217 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 15317, an ordinance to erect resident-only parking, signs on Rogers Ave, referencing the Chapter 16954, Section C, reference Rogers Ave from North Street to Lincoln Street, as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition 21308, final reading.
Motion to send 15317 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second, send 15317 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, one in opposition. 15517, an ordinance amending the city code regarding mayoral appointments of department heads and division managers by amending Paragraph B of the Section 3-4 of the city code titled Mayoral Appointments, as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition 22514, final reading.
Motion to send 15517 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 15517 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 15417, an ordinance establishing a resident-only parking area on Brown Avenue from Rogers Avenue to Highland Avenue, reference petition 23408, first reading.
Motion to send 15417 to its first reading.
I have a motion and second to send 15417 to its first reading.
What motion?
15417, it was motioned to send it to its first reading.
Yeah, I got one question on the first reading.
Counselor, I have a.
Go ahead.
Counselor, you have the floor.
I just got one question. On this, on this residential parking only, are we going to, are they going to be paying extra and, for this privilege, to have that privilege in front of their house, that they have a residential parking area?
Counselor, they, they will not, no.
The effect to value of their real estate, they may.
The, the city solicitor added, if it affects the value of their real estate, then, then yes, they may be paying, may be paying more.
They will.
Certainly a point.
If it affects the value.
Counselor, are you done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
All right, Counselor Donnelly.
I just said, I don't think we have anywhere else to tape.
Counselor Green.
My question for that is, are they going to go to City Hall and buy a special sticker that, that says that they're a resident, allowed to park there?
I think they have since 2008.
Counselor, they have since 2008, it actually was a pass, signs were put in, it's actually worked well with, I've received exactly zero complaints during my time as ward counselor of that area for parking, so it seems to have worked out quite well, and in fact, most people aren't, there's very little area for people to park, so most, most folks are parking in their, in their driveways.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to send 15417 to its first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 176.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, one in opposition. 17617, an ordinance amending Section 21-1 through 21-10 of the, Chapter 21 of the Pittsburgh City Code, finances, reference petition 812017, first reading.
Motion to send 17617 to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second, send 17617 to its first reading, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. 17717, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Pittsburgh City Code, sale of city-owned real estate, reference petition 100-2017, first reading, this was amended, councilors, you received at your, at your settings today, the amended language.
Motion to send 17717 to its first reading as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 17717 to its first reading as amended, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. 17817, an ordinance amending and adding new sections to Chapter 3 of the Pittsburgh City Code, purchasing, referencing, petition 1012017, first reading.
Motion to send 17817 to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 17817 to its first reading, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous, motion carries, petitions, 179.
Motion to send 17917 and 18017 to a public hearing on June 20th.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 179 and 18017 to public hearings on June 20th, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous.
Motion to send 18217 up to and including 18617 to their respective committees.
Counselor, did you deliberately exclude 181?
No, no.
I have a motion and second to.
Second.
Can I ask that 18117 be given leave to withdraw?
So I have a motion on the floor to send 182 up to and including 18617 to their respective committees.
Yeah, I guess I did.
Well done, Counselor Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous.
Move 18117 be given leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion and second, send 18117 be given leave to withdraw, speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn, just one quick announcement, the Parks Board meeting was canceled this evening, it will, it will be held on June 8th, same place and same time as regularly scheduled. That said, I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous, thank you, councilors.